We're gonna call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Roll call, everybody's here except for Lou. Lou will not be here tonight.
And I would just like to note, for the record, that last meeting, I did not remember that Randy had told me that he would not be at that meeting. So when I had that blank look on my face, I'm going to attribute it to old age.
Only to old age?
Because I forgot, but he did tell me that he was going to be gone in the last meeting.
So we were cursing him for no reason at all?
Yeah, that's right. It was all, it was all my fault. He had told me.
Do we have to go back to that meeting and redo it?
No, I don't think we have to go that far. I just wanted to note it.
Okay, alright. Additions to the agenda, we have one underneath the additions to the agenda for the consent. Number four?
Correct.
Any other additions to the agenda?
No.
Okay. An option of the agenda?
I'll move adopt the agenda.
Motion from Cheryl?
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Proven corrected minutes from the June 12th, 2018 rigorous school board meeting. It was in the packet.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Second.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Financial reports. The May 2018 Treasury reports, it's in your packet, Bob?
Uh, no, we're just the way it was supposed to, so.
I see that.
So I think we're good to go.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers' report.
I'll second it.
And a motion from Mark and a second from Heidi. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Audit and approval of the bills. We have additional May bills of 2018 and then the June of 2018 bills. Cheryl?
Um, I was able to win and audit the bills. I saw absolutely nothing out of the ordinary. Everything is going smoothly. Everything was pre-approved. I'm moving to approve the bills.
I got a motion from Cheryl.
Oh, second.
And a second from Bruce. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Consent agenda, we have four of those underneath the consent agenda, so for number one, review and consider approval of the following van drivers for the summer school. Deana Haig approximately thirty-four, or thirty-five hours. Percy LaBach approximately forty hours. And Brenda Kokowski approximately twenty-eight hours. Review and consider approval of the donation from the community giving of $12,000, $12,031.13.
And that was for the robotics program?
Yep. Uh, number three, review and consider approval of adding one hour a week to Genie Omsheid's paraprofessional effect of September 4th, 2018.
And that was caused because we're going down to one media specialist now, so we need to add a little bit more time at the elementary.
And the fourth one, which was the addition, is review and consider approval of Brad Pence to teach the middle school, high school targeted service remediation program for approximately seventy-two hours from July 9th of 2018 through August 3rd of 2018. So those were underneath the consent agenda. If anybody has any questions, if not?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Business. Number one, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to ask any questions, please raise your hands and I will call on you. So, for number one, review and consider approval of the possible 2018-19 school year revenue and expenditure budget.
Yes, this is the second reading of this, so unless there are some additional questions that the board members may have, I'm just going to recommend that you recommend and approve this budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Second. So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number two, review and consider approval of the resolution for membership of the Minnesota School, State High School League for the 2018-19 school year. This is something we do every year, and this is for us to participate in the high school league. Otherwise, we would never, won't be able to do that. And Max would be very dissatisfied.
I'm not going to approve that resolution.
So I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Heidi, since it's a resolution. I'll do a roll call.
Mark?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, carried. Uh, number three, review and consider approval of the membership for schools of equity in education, which is our C for the 2018-19 school year.
It's virtually the same amount as we paid in past years. I know that Rick represents the board on this particular committee. I think that it's been a great organization for the Haynesville to belong to. So, Rick, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add?
No, we need to be on that group. I will move to accept that.
To approve it?
Yep.
Okay, so I got a motion from Rick. Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number four, review and consider approval of the 2018-19 five-year capital plan. It's in your packet.
Yeah, this is the second look at this. We changed a few small numbers, $1,000 here, $1,000 there, but not much of a change. You've had this in your packet. The only thing that I would say that when you approve it, I'd like to change one thing towards the bottom of the page where it's improvement of buildings on the first side, and then it says middle school, high school. Just look about the one, two, three, four, fifth, sixth line up. It says reconfigure office space, and they have CE, secondary nurses. I'm just going to remove that because we're really just kind of remodeling our current office space and adjusting that. So that was kind of specific to that, and we'll just leave reconfigure office space down. So I will remove that from the final draft of this once you accept, approve it, if you do approve it. So unless there's any other questions for this, you've had an opportunity to take a look at it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
With the changes?
With the changes.
Okay.
So I got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
Second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number five, review and consider approval of 2018-19 long-term facility maintenance ten-year plan.
We've already gone over this also. Just a couple things to point out. We're gonna put $8,000 in to paint our CT shops, but I think that depends on how everything else goes out. If we're gonna do anything else to them, we don't want to have to paint them, do some things, and then have to repaint, so that may or may not occur. And then also, we moved welding exhaust and the egg exhaust at least on for one year. I guess just to make sure that our ducks are in row and we get everything exactly the way we want it. So we just put it, the next year, we put those funds in for that. So that'd be kind of the changes that occurred since the last time we talked.
It's really nice to see that we're able to start doing more things with that capital.
I think that the long-term facility maintenance is going to continue to fix a lot of things that we've waited to do for a long time, so it is nice to see. I agree. Five years from now, I think you're gonna have gotten a lot of things done.
I'll move to approve.
So I got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
I might, my, just went blank. Paused, same sign, and carried. Must be thinking about something else. I don't know what to think. My brain is kind of bad, died there for a second. Uh, number six, review and consider approval of lead in water management plan for the Haynesville area public schools.
Donnie should probably come down to the mic. Are you gonna answer any questions on this one? We know how much you love to be in front of that.
Now, this is something new, right?
It is something new.
Okay.
Donnie will explain why it's something new.
Is this on?
Yep.
Okay, the MDH decided that, well, throughout the schools, they must have found a few schools that had a lot of lead in their pipelines. We have already checked our schools not as extensively as they want us to do now, but we are good. You know, we've checked east to west, or north to south, in our schools, different drinking fountains. Well, now they want us to check every fountain. Like in the elementary school, there's 44 fountains because every classroom has a fountain in it. So, now, we had to come up with a plan, how we were gonna go about it. In five years, we have, well, we have to start this out, at least get going on it, do a section at a time, or do a school at a time, or within five years, we gotta, we have to have our whole school system checked, so. So we got a plan in place now. We're gonna start testing. We've done all our testing through Voss Plummines, which is probably the cheapest route we've found yet, and they're accredited, where they sent it in, so.
What are, we've got kind of expenses that we're looking at?
About $30 a fountain.
$30 a fountain?
But, I don't know. Something was brought up that maybe AMPI would, they have a testing lab, but I haven't checked with them yet to see if they would even consider it, or if it's even up to MDH standards, so.
Okay.
But I gotta look into that. But we do have the plan now, so we're going to have to start something after July. We have to have the plan approved by July, and then we have to start implementing the plan.
And I just want to remind, we have been doing this testing, so it's not like we've ignored this situation. We've been testing as we've needed to, I think, so, but it is what it is. Another policy. And this one needs to be more approved, so.
Is this an actual policy?
Not a policy, it's just a plan. You're approving the plan.
Okay, alright.
So every time we put a change to it, we can come back and have you reapprove the plan.
So we're looking at like 44 fountains per school?
Yeah, I think we, I ended up with about 86 total.
Okay.
Counting all the fountains, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to have it out there.
Is that, is that including the land trans, too? Or do they have not fountains?
They have one.
They have one, okay, alright.
And we'll have to get that one, too.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the lead-in water management plan.
Second.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Alright, review and consider approval of the PSEO tuition agreement between Ridgewater College and Haynesville area schools for the 2018-19 school year.
We have been doing this with Ridgewater for a long time. Laws is keep the state aid, so I would certainly recommend that we move forward with it.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number eight, review and consider approval of the resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election.
One more step for the general election for the school board members, so it is needed to be done.
I'll make a motion to approve. Was that a resolution?
That's a resolution.
Resolution.
Got a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Now we can go ahead with the roll call.
Mark?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Aye, it's carried. Number nine, review and consider approval of the employee rate-to-no exposure to hazardous substances policy, policy 407.
Um, this is a pretty big change to the policy. If we need to have Donnie come down, we will, but in essence, they put this together in 2003, and there are just a lot of things in here that we don't need to, in our policy. As you know, that we've put procedures under the policies, but we have not approved them as policy. So there'll be some procedures for this that will go under the policy, but we ran off, right off of MSBA's model policy for this, and that's what we're recommending that the board approve. Much simpler, and then procedures to make sure that we follow the policy will be put in place.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is this the first reading for this?
Um, it is the first reading, but we have had the policy before. So it's up to the board. The board can certainly bring this back for a second reading on all these policies, but all these policies are current, and the board practice has been on occasion to approve a policy on the first reading if the policy is current.
Okay.
So it is certainly up to the board on whether they want to get a second reading. That would be fine. That's no issues. If it is, we'll put it on the next agenda. Otherwise, it's up to the board if they want to go and approve it now.
So I got a motion from Bruce already on the table. I got a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number 10, review and consider approval of the student attendance policy, policy 503.
Um, this is a current policy. Do want to note one change that if you approve this policy tonight, on page four, under number seven, it says absences resulting from accumulated unexcused tardies at the discretion of the administration. And it says, right now, the way it's written, three tardies may equal five unexcused absences. Um, I will take the complete blame for that. I kind of flipped things around. It should read, five tardies may equal one unexcused absence. Alright, makes a little, makes a little bit more sense. So, other than that, you've had a chance to read the policy, so unless you have questions on the changes that were made, and again, this is, I think the last time this was updated was on, in 2006, so they've come out with a new policy now, and we've kind of run off of the current MSBA model policy, and we've made changes that you've got, you've had in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number 11, review and consider approval of the student transportation safety policy, policy 709.
And I should also mention to the community and other board members that this, all these policies have been run through our policy committee, so they've all seen these, they're all fine with the changes, so be aware of that. For the student transportation safety policy, we also had our transportation company come in and sit with the administrative team when we went through this. And we, so we also, they provided their input for it. The major changes for this policy are on page six, school bus driver duties and responsibilities. That's new to the policy, and the policy's been reformatted because we put that in and moved some of the other things down, but that is new, and bus, the transportation company is fine with that. They're doing all those things now. And that goes all the way through page seven. And also, school bus driver training is also new to this policy, and that goes all the way through eight. And the operating rules and procedures on page eight is new, and that goes all the way through to page nine, and then the type three vehicles has been moved on. And then there's some clarifications as far as some wording and stuff for name titles and stuff to the vehicles, but you've had a chance to take a look at that. So the administrative team has taken a look at it, transportation has, the policy committee has taken a look at it, and we're recommending that it's approved. So unless you have additional questions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
So I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number 12, review and consider approval of the wellness policy, policy 533.
Uh, the last time that we did a food service, MD comes in and reviews our food service. They took a look at our wellness policy, there were some changes that needed to be made. So last year, we put a committee together, made up of committee members and school staff, and we went through the policy. It's still kind of built up, the MSBA model policy, but there were some changes that we needed to put in place to meet all the requirements that MDE has set forth. Now, there's going to be another review of our food service this year. One of the things they will look at this, and there's no doubt in my mind that they will find something that we need to change, but for now, this will meet most of their pieces unless they see something in there that we need to tweak a little bit, but it shouldn't be too much. And again, this has been recommended by the committee last year of the community and staff members, and the administration has taken a look at this. We've recommended, and the policy committee is recommending also.
I'll make a motion to approve the wellness policy.
I got a motion from Heidi.
Second.
Second from Rick, or Randy, I'm sorry. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Nothing underneath personnel, so we're gonna move on to the informational report, the secondary principal report, Lori Flora.
This is our officers for our National Honors Society, and they would like to talk to the board about what they have been doing this year.
My name is Jaclyn Hefta, I'm the president.
My name is Britta Ledman, I'm the treasurer.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Birlato, I'm the vice president of NHS. So we, so we, we're gonna present a PowerPoint to you guys and just show you what we have done. We have provided some pictures on there, so it makes us a nice visual, but.
Can we move around?
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's give them a PowerPoint. Oh.
So we can see your show and tell.
Yeah. So being in NHS, we have to be, we have to go through our school year with those four pillars that we had, scholarship and leadership, character, and service. And so now we'll go through the fall and winter activities.
Alright, in the fall, we started with doing concessions at the football games.
We also did a coat drive, a community center, and we prepared Christmas baskets, a Christmas party, and caroling, and the induction banquet, and we'll go and just kind of give you a little bit on them. So, well, okay, with the coat drive, what we did was, we collected over two large boxes of coat and winter gear, and then we donated it to the community center, and it was a big turnout. We had many boots, we had a lot of gloves, hats, and we were able to provide some families with it, as Allison Jensen told us.
Okay, at the community center, we prepared baskets of food for the holidays. And then, at a Christmas party and caroling, we went to the manor and sang carols for all the residents, and then came back to the school and just like bonded as an NHS group.
Some spring activities that we did was community appreciation baskets, and then we did a community center food drive. Pennies for change was one, was actually a new service project that we took on this year, and as you see, we collected over $650. And then we did a baseball and softball glove drive, and let's see, I'll let Jaclyn talk.
Okay, um, for our baseball and softball glove drive, that was for their mission trip with the Lutheran church that just went to Haiti, and they taught all the kids how to play baseball and stuff, and gave them gloves, and just, yeah. For the community appreciation baskets, the NHS group went around and delivered baked goods to different people around the community that, like firefighters, nurses, and the like.
Police, officers. Yes, can't forget about our police department. Can you move on to the next one, please? Um, some spring activities that we did, elementary track and field day concert in the park, which was held over this past weekend, and if you guys did not stop by at the media center, that was a lot of work we're doing there. So, elementary track and field day, we get told by the middle school, I mean, by the elementary gym teachers that it's nice to have some helpers out directing activities and whatnot, and so we just, we took about three days, if I'm not mistaken. They do, every grade is a different day, and we were there, helped set up, we were helping them direct, we even got involved, and then we helped take it all down.
And then for our concert in the park, that was the last weekend we did, and we, instead of, so we don't do Relay for Life in Haynesville this year, so instead, we, to raise money, we did the concert in the park, and then money we raised that day went for raising money for cancer, so instead of the Relay for Life. The NHS group has also taken on the job of remodeling the high school media center into a study space, I believe?
Student center.
A student center, okay.
What we have been painting, we have been, we took down all of the shelves, and then we were painting, and we still are not done, and then we're hoping, on this coming fall, we are going to be pairing up, NHS will be pairing up with principals advisory, and we'll be discussing some plans to go about new furniture being placed in there to help us get more comfortable while we're studying for all those exams. And I believe that's it, right?
There should be another one.
Oh, there should be another one? Oh, okay, camp, okay. Let's see, prom. We did a grand march at the manor in Washburn, Coort. We, it's our understanding that NHS has done that for a while. The members there love to see all of the dresses and tuxes go through, and it's a nice little get-together, taking pictures here and there. And then Box City. Here, I'll let Jaclyn go.
Alright, Box City, we also raised money for the community center, so before, we got pledge cards, and we'd go out to community members and businesses and ask them for pledges, and then we, everyone just brought a whole bunch of cardboard boxes, and like, we went together and like made big boxes, bigger boxes that we fit in, and we just slept out there overnight, so like replicating what it would be like to be homeless and live in a box. And we raised over $1,500 to the community center.
I believe that's it. Thank you.
Any questions from the board members to the National Honors Society? We are very proud of this group this year. They are probably the most active National Honors Society group than, as far as what we've had in a few years, so they have worked very hard within our community and school. Any questions?
Since we have a great start out this year with all the, is that kind of a platform that the National Honors Society, I don't know that you've passed it?
Yes.
There was really not a lot of great direction, I don't think, of what needed to be done or what should be done, so.
And yes, with our new advisor and commitment as far as the platform... And yes, with our new advisor and commitment as far as the platform, I think we'll only see it improve and become more engaged. We're excited for the change.
Kudos to this group for they are so active as a community.
They have been a change dynamic.
Wonderful.
Alright, thanks guys. And the library is open if anybody wants to see mid-project progress. Alright, not only has our library been under construction, the custodians have done a great job in doing the end of the year, the new year projects across the building, but also our office, if you want to, you can stop by the school office, and you'll see that in transition, a couple of the walls are out, and it's amazing how nice the new entryway will be for our public, so I will have that open if you wanna take a walk through at this point. And then we are meeting this summer with some of our CTE groups, the CNA group that is looking at possibly offering a CNA course here in Painesville, that would be a group project within three schools, is still meeting, and hopefully we'll have a plan laid out by fall to present to our school board to move forward with that. And then summer school will be starting July 9th, so any questions that you may, and we've also been meeting with the gala as far as looking at our CTE planning, and we have a vision, and now we're just looking at outlining the specifics, so that when we start that project, it'll be move ahead, yep. Any questions from the board?
Mine's probably not too relevant, but for Donnie too. When you are tearing out, you turn out a wall, right, in the office, are there metal poles supporting the roof inside there? Okay, I'm just curious, a few years, a few years ago, we went to the conference, and they told that a school that tore out those walls. Mark, you actually went there, and I looked at data, and all of a sudden, they ended up with modern looks by just tearing these walls out because it was supported by poles.
Oh, yeah.
Well, today, we don't know if those poles are there.
Yeah, it was a non-supporting wall that was taken out.
Okay.
Number two, elementary principal report, David Orline.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, just a few updates, on May 25th, we had our color run, and it was a blast, it was a lot of fun. We ended up raising, our students alone raised over $12,000 in pledges and donations, and businesses donated almost $10,000, and so we made about, after some expenses, we made about $19,000, $20,000. We are currently in the process of finalizing some quotes with, we decided on a company, and we're, we just met with him again today, and they're going over some plans and trying to finalize some of those things. At this point, playgrounds are really expensive, and we are looking to complete this in phases and get as much done as we can at a time, and so we're working with the company right now, and the playground committee has come up with some designs in there, and the company is working with us on those, and so as those become more finalized, and I get a schedule on some of the construction, then I will update the board at that time. We have some elementary construction going on, the bathrooms are getting a huge facelift, and I went down there today, and the new wash basins are pretty much installed, and the bathrooms where they're replacing the urinals that went all the way down to the floor, those are all out, and so maybe three weeks or so, we should see some vast improvement, barring any delays. On August 7th and 8th, we have a group of eight of us that are gonna be beginning the PBIS training in Duluth, and that will be really a major initiative for our building in the net for the next two years, and that is the Positive Behavioral Intervention Systems, and it really, we're going into this training with our eyes wide open and just really eager to learn all about it, and come back and through more training, be able to make this our own and create a school environment that works well for us as far as the PBIS goes. Any other, any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Good job. Activities director, Dean of Students, report, Max Maher.
Well, just a handful of items to make you aware of. The State High School League at their June Board of Directors meeting voted a change for basketball court lines in the state of Minnesota that we'll have to put in, if you're familiar, the half circle, semicircle for the charge line inside the lane, if that's of relevance to you, but we have to add that to our court, so need to figure out how we're gonna accomplish that, that's a new rule that starts this year, so when, one of our school board members is on the State High School League Board of Directors as a board rep, we'll try to get those rules in place, passed in a little bit advanced notice, so that we can put those things in the budget instead of after budgets are set, but. So you approved the attendance policy, so one thing for Mrs. Flora and myself to sit down and go over what the procedures for that will be, the main significant change within that is there is a change, it used to be that you could potentially lose credit for having a certain amount of absences, that was a combined excused and unexcused, and now it's just for excused. So I felt like if we're giving somebody an excused absence, you're not gonna lose credit where we told them that they're excused, and then all of a sudden, they could lose credit, so that was one of the main changes in there. Because of the office remodel, and then also we're getting a new phone system, my phone is unplugged for the summer, my office is getting, taking stuff.
Go ahead and fool you.
Yeah, that's right, so, and it's, I'm getting a brand new phone, so I'm just gonna pretend I can't get any of those voicemails afterwards either, so, no, but, so if you do need to get ahold of anybody in the office, email's the best, or you'll have to, it's room 103, so it'd probably be extension 3103 or something like that, but nobody's, nobody is in the office.
Why don't you just give us your cell number now?
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody in, everybody in the district has it already anyways, so. You'll see, I guess, an acceptance of a $1,000 grant from CMMA. I went to Park Industries for a tour, which is in Wade Park, as part of a requirement to, we received a $1,000 grant for the robotics, which is on top of the amount of money that we got from the community foundation as well, so that money that we got has funded our robotics program last year as well as this upcoming year. So obviously, we'll continue to look for grants and things that we can do to fund that program, but for next year, nothing's, again, gonna be coming out of our budget. Our trap shooting team got first in the conference and competed in the regional tournament in Alexandria and got fifth place in the double A. There's nine classes in the top 40 overall, went to the state tournament, we got fifth in double A. I do not know overall how that shook, but we didn't make it. Obviously, our baseball team made the state tournament, and that was fantastic. I just wanted to mention to you, Senex and Paul Evans have donated all the fertilizer for our athletic fields again. If you went up on top of the baseball stadium and looked at the football field, you would tell where they fertilized, because they didn't fertilize like the last little horseshoe piece of behind the goalpost, it's like a really deep shade of green. And then Kenny Ossendorf donated all the time to spread all that out there. Kenny additionally does a lot of maintenance for us on our sprinkling system and stuff, so we don't hire anybody out when I first started here, and I've done a little bit of it, but Kenny's thankfully has took it out, he said, "You don't need to be out there doing that," and so we used to hire people to do that, and so he's fixed a lot of pipe for us and done that, it's been fantastic. Last thing is, is I debated whether I would say this or not, but gentleman sitting right over there who doesn't want any public recognition, and when students come into my office, I talked to him about two things, and the two things that we can control is our attitude and our effort, and from my standpoint, when I had a poor attitude, Bob would always be there to point me in the right direction, and obviously, his effort speaks for himself, he was supposed to be taking vacation after this board meeting, and I guess he's still gonna be here, in the meantime, I'm going on vacation, so what the heck is that? Just publicly, I mean, I know you guys understand where he's at, but I just, this is recorded and goes out to the public, and certainly appreciate him working all the way through the end for us, so, thank you.
Thank you. Buildings and ground supervisor, report, Donnie Mayer.
I'm gonna update you on a few projects again. Horizon Roofing came in, oh, about nine o'clock this morning with three semis and started unloading materials. They hope to start as soon as it quits raining, but every time they wanna start something, they said they're a little behind on different projects, they will get here. High school air handler, they reinforced our, what did I say, joists up in the ceiling so they can put the air handler on the roof, so they'll be pulling out the old air handler and the air conditioner, old air conditioner on the roof. Yeah, new air handler comes all in one unit, air and heat, so, good deal. Softball fencing, they plan on starting Monday, the varsity finish off the corner up there. They talked about the high school office ready, tearing walls out. Bandroom lights, we had sent 20 metal highlight fixtures into this, to, well, Haynes is working with us, and they went to the cities, they're gonna be retrofitted into LED, so we'll probably have some decent bandroom lighting once it's all over. We've been working on that for a few years. Elementary school bathrooms, Dave brought up, they got a mess, but they are, I think they're gonna be pretty sharp when they're done. They also installed three water, or water fomes over here with bottle fillers, that's complete, well, I shouldn't say complete, a lot of this is, this has to be electrified, this has to be electrified. Our electrician is behind too, but it will be here, he said.
Good.
Other than that, any questions?
No. Thanks, Donnie. Policy committee report, Cheryl, do you have anything more to say about the policy?
The policy committee met. And Bob already informed us about all this new stuff, unless you want me to read them all to you?
Well, I don't know, I think we could, you know, spend the next three hours reading those policies out, but no, I think we.
Otherwise, I think it's pretty much.
Yeah, I think we can move on.
Alright, number six, transportation negotiation committee meeting, Bruce Vanderpool.
Well, I'll just say a little bit about the last meeting, I missed today's, so I'll pass that to Mark, but we got a lot of data from the state, Bob had a person helping us, try and make a really good analysis of what we're doing, and that's about where that one stopped, and then I missed this morning's meeting, so we'll move that to you. You can inform everybody.
So at the end of last meeting before, what Bruce was talking about is that we kind of laid some ground rules and stuff like that for the meetings and stuff like that. One of the things that, at the end of that meeting, the transportation had to come back with a proposal to us on what they are looking at for a potential increases or whatever, or language changes or whatever, so they did come this morning, and they did present to us what they are recommending us to consider. There's some things that we still need from the closure of last year's budget, so we couldn't really emphasize, or we couldn't really say too much about if we would be agreement or not to anything today, so what we basically did is we are getting more information from the bus service on the closure of last year's expenditures, and then on Friday, we were going to meet at 7:15 to start our negotiations on, so, that's kind of where that was left at, so Friday, Bruce, will be here.
Did you sleep?
No, he had a, he had a, he had an early meeting too, unexpectedly. So, we'll leave that as that, so, but anyhow, we made it through the meeting without any too, too much harm anyhow, and Bob kept us on track, so there you go. Budget and finance, that was me, and we went through that already, we all approved it, so, does it, do you have anything?
Yeah, well, we can put the committee that we had met in there, and that, on the committee, Bob ran several forecasts on our fund balances going forward and that, and they all look very good. We put in state, like, one was state five, a half percent, salaries go up two percent, and ran several of those, and every one of them, I was impressed, we're gonna get out a few years, it looks good, and as far as the funds for Painesville School District, it was real good, I'm very impressed, please, good job.
And my conservative self would just remind everybody that things can change very quickly, so just be aware of that, and it's hard to forecast out anything past two years.
Alrighty, C committee report, Rick?
Okay, well, those changes that can happen in a hurry oftentimes fall back on the state legislature, so C is a very important thing to belong to, a very important organization, and I get a lot out of meetings, just not just what we get from C, but from the other school districts. We met a couple weeks ago over in Kimball, and the biggest report that we received is that the state legislature this year basically, I don't know if I'd say failed us, they just didn't do anything.
Accomplished nothing?
Accomplished nothing, yeah. I guess the two most important things that came out of it were the retirement fund, which was a positive for us, and the safety money, which turned out to be a boondoggle, sort of like this, I mean, they sounded like we were gonna get $18 per student, per school to do work, and then at the last second, it turned around, and they took a whole lump of money, and they basically said schools can apply for it, and I believe the middle of July is when the application comes, they didn't have anything ready for this, they didn't have applications ready, they don't even, even with the application, they weren't sure how are they gonna pick the schools, first come, first served basis, but we have an opportunity to apply for up to half a million dollars, I believe.
Five hundred thousand.
If every school applied for that, I think 18% of the schools would get, would get only 18%, so not everybody's gonna apply for half a million dollars, but it's something that we have to be prepared for, even though we, I don't think we know yet what the application looks like, or what the exact requirements will be, but we have to be ready and prepared to jump on that.
We should have some time, once the thing comes out, there should be some time for the district to put an application together and meet the timeline on when it has to be turned in.
Right. I think the only other thing is that, basically, everything's on hold now until we see what the elections are like in the fall, and that's gonna be extremely important, and I think as individual community members, we need to know what questions we should be asking our candidates for state office, whether it's governor or our state representative, senators, the makeup of the, after the elections, as far as who the governor is, it's gonna, that's gonna change things, that's gonna, or it won't change things, but it's gonna be extremely important, we'll need to keep our eyes open to that, so.
That's all I have, that's all?
Yeah.
I actually have a question there, so my curiosity is the positive part of the teacher's retirement fund, we posted almost $6 million, it's sitting on our financial statement right now, of the overspending of the teacher's retirement fund, so what's positive about that? We operate the school on $12 million, and we have $6 million of. We operate the school on $12 million and we have $6 million of overspent retirement fund, so.
Only if they collect it.
No.
You know, and they're certainly saying that that's not going to happen. It would be an interesting scenario if all of a sudden they decided to collect that information.
So nothing really changed there.
Yeah. Well, I think that the TRA piece truly was a great attempt by the legislature and I, you know, I don't think they did get a lot done, but the TRA piece was important to the district. For the most part, they're paying the addition that the district will pay this year and they did have to do something to help put the TRA program on a more solid basis. So I commend the legislature and the governor for at least getting that done because that was an important piece to keep that on solid ground so that we can do that. And the legislature did take off most of what we will pay. I think they go off of last year's dollars, so we'll be a little behind, so it won't be quite as much. We'll, we'll lose a little bit, but it won't be a lot be much. It'll be over probably 98% that they'll pay for the additions, for the TRA for this next year.
But at this point, $6 million sits on our books.
Well, it sits on our books, but those amounts sit on every school district's books in the state. So when they start to collect it, I'll, it'll be an interesting scenario. I don't think it'll happen.
Yeah, I just don't want to necessarily be on the school board when we have to go back to the taxpayers and tell them they have to pay that a second time.
It'll be interesting if that's what happens.
All right. Minnesota report, Robert Hewitt.
Just a few things. One, we continue to get ready for next year. The custodians are doing a great job. If you poke your head in some of the rooms, they're starting to look good, but it's a lot of work. Hard to believe that we'll soon be starting July. I'm sure that the summer's flying by and I am sure that the students are just glad to hear that. So I'm sure they're looking forward to getting back. Just be aware that Sterns County Sheriff Department will no longer be doing the Dare Elementary, or program at the elementary school. The city did talk about it and I've talked with the police chief, they are going to send an officer to, I think it's a two-week training, to get the training for Dare and they will take that over. It's, and we thank the city for their willingness to do that. We'll be adding new phone system, as been mentioned. Hopefully in July, that'll come in. We think it'll be a, a good system. I think, Mark, you're familiar with it. You have the same type of system in the hospital, so we're looking forward to that. We talked about the roofing project. We've hired the firm, I mentioned that last time, done our construction to get us the cost for the proposed project. Hopefully that'll come in mid-July. And then it'll go back to the facility committee at that time for discussion about the dollar amount. As Laurie mentioned, we're going to remodel the offices. It'll make it much more secure, just like the elementary school where they have, they're forced to enter into the office in order to go into the main part of the secondary building. And then just one last thing, as this is my last board meeting, I'll be attending, I just wanted to take time, my thanks to the students, parents, guardians and staff for all they do each and every day. I want to thank the school board for all you do. You don't get much credit for the hard work you put in and you've just simply been fantastic. I could not have asked in my wildest dream for the board that I've been blessed to be able to work with. I've learned so much in my time here. I want to thank you all for that. And lastly, I want to thank the community for their support for the district. They've been great to work for. I simply could not be happier or prouder to end my career at Painesville as a bulldog. It has been my honor, my privilege to serve the community and for one last time, I want to say, you need a strong school to have a strong community and you need a strong community to have a strong school. So thank you all.
Okay, with that being said, does anybody else have anything to say?
Where's Lou and I need him.
Yeah, we're going to be here all night. Yeah, we'll be at our last meeting. We're not going to figure that out.
I think we should give each other, each one of us an opportunity to say whatever they want to say to Bob and then we have some.
Somebody simply just needs to do whose part here. That's all I'm asking.
No, no.
Let's do the sharing, okay. You want to start, Don?
Sure. I want to say, Bob, you've done a great job for our district. You've kept in mind our district almost like it was your own, almost specifically your own. You took care of everything. You watched over everything to make sure it was all correct and I thank you for all of that. I still look at our budget, an area that I think you were concerned about when you came, and look at us now. We didn't have dramatic things we had to do, but stuff that was tough to do. And here we sit, potentially making the end of our referendum. That's a big deal and you've done a really good job, so thank you for everything.
And I'd want to say that for somebody who lives 30 miles away and rides his motorcycle here and through Ohio, you're more a member of this community than, than you probably imagined. You really are a part of our community and we appreciate that, that you, I don't know when you ever went home. So thank you very much for not just being our superintendent, but for being a part of the Painesville community and you will be missed.
Yeah, I want to say thank you too. You've done a lot for the community. You talk about community and we look at the GAYLA, we look at everything that happened there. It's really remarkable and you had a lot to do with it. Great job, the finance, everything. I mean, I've learned a lot from you too as well.
We came on together. I was elected the same time, same year that you came on and it's been a great six years. Never having had a lot to do with the school. You taught me a lot, but you led us and that was wonderful. I don't know how we would have come together the way we did. Great people we had on the board, but we needed a leader and you were it. And you've been pretty much the face of the school and one place that's always going to be empty is your spot in the gym. So I wanted to give this to you to remember your spot by.
Thank you.
And I'm going to make it short and sweet because I'll probably cry because I'm emotional. I just want to say thank you for just caring so much for our community, for the kids, for the staff. You have a big heart and you, you showed it to everybody and you, every decision you made, no matter if it was easy decision or hard decision, you took it to heart and you made, you made the decision with the best interest of all of us and I wanted to say thank you for all of that.
Yeah, I've been on this board for many, many years and had the opportunity to work with lots of superintendents, which is good and bad, I guess, but at the end of the day, I think what everybody had alluded to today is the presence that you commanded when you were leading a meeting, when you were in a group of people. Those are some things that you cannot teach anybody. It's something that is just a charisma that you have that is superior to a lot of other people that I have met. I think that I wish we could have had a lot more years with you because I think we could have done more things just because it takes so long for people to, to accept change and so on and so forth. So you're going to be a hard person to fill the shoes on. I think we have a great candidate here in the room that's going to propel on this. I mean, he's been kind of on the sidelines for a couple of years in the district, so he kind of knows what, what you've brought to this community. Hopefully that he took note of that. I'm sure he has, I mean, just by the things that we, you know, seen in his interviews and saying, and stuff like that, so. But again, Bob, how can I ever say thanks? But thanks. There you go. Does anybody in the community want to say anything? I know you guys all had the opportunity to in the past, so before we get too emotional.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we got a motion from.
Good motion.
Heidi, second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Here is not all in favor to signify by aye. Aye, 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 hold, same sign and carry.